Welcome to the August 15, 2022, meeting of the City of Tuscaloosa Planning and Zoning Commission. This meeting allows for alternate participation in order to accommodate all citizens. Any written comments sent to staff will be forwarded to this commission directly. At this time, I'd like to introduce our staff. We have Mr. Jimbo Woodson, Deputy City Attorney, Michael Garner, Civil Engineer, Zach Pons, Acting Director of Planning, Kaitlin Giles, Development Review Coordinator, and Tiana Rivas, Office Administrator. There are nine members of the Planning Commission, all of whom were appointed by the mayor for staggered terms, with the exception of the City Council Representative, who was appointed by the City Council. I ask the commission members to introduce themselves, beginning with Ms. Prince.
Dina Prince, Attorney.
Vince Dooley, UA Construction Administration.
Tim Harrison, General Contract.
Eddie Pugh, Retired.
Bill Wright, Business Owner. There are sign-up sheets outside for public comment. If you do not sign up, you will still be given an opportunity to speak. Ladies and gentlemen, the procedure of this meeting, the commission will take up items in order of our final agenda. The commission will initially receive a presentation from the staff as to the details of the agenda item. Additionally, we may hear certain matters involving the same property, such as annexation and a zoning matter concurrently, although we will take separate votes on each matter involving the same property. After the staff presentation, we'll then call upon the petitioner to present their case. At the conclusion of the petitioner's remarks, I will then call on any other party in order of sign up or otherwise who desires to support the petition, and their act will call in order of sign up or otherwise those who oppose the petition. When it's your turn for comment, staff introduce you to the commission to provide your remarks. Any written comments have been included into the record. We reserve the right to limit the time of remarks as to those agenda items with lengthy sign-up sheets or where continued from previous meetings. After receiving the remarks of those who oppose the petition, the petitioner will have the opportunity to respond to those objections. If the petitioner presents any new information in response to the objections, we will allow those who oppose the opportunity to respond to the new information only. During the course of this presentation, you may be interrupted by any member of the commission for clarification or additional information. Such interruptions will not reduce your time. Once the commission members are satisfied that they have received all relevant information, I will then close for the discussion by the public, at which time the commission members will discuss the matter and vote. After the vote, you are free to leave. These proceedings are video-recorded and broadcast live, and all in-person public comments should be made at the podium into the microphone. Comments made by phone or virtually are video-recorded through the conferencing application. Please first state your name and address for the record. Jurisdiction in all matters pertaining to subdivision regulations, approval of subdivisions within the city and its planning jurisdiction, and as to amendments, planned unit developments, and located outside the city limits, this commission serves as the final authority. As to matters pertaining to historic buffer zone construction, our decision is subject to appeal to the City Council. As to all remaining agenda matters, including original zonings, rezonings, planned unit developments within the city, and street vacations, this commission serves as a recommending body to the City Council. In that regard, our decisions are in the form of a recommendation to be presented to the City Council, and the City Council will make the final decision on those matters. Subdivision approval requires the affirmative vote of six members of the Planning Commission. All matters which are recommendations to the City Council require a majority vote for an affirmative recommendation. At this time, I would ask any members of the commission if they have any conflicts of interest to any agenda matters. If so, please state for the record.
Mr. Chairman, I will be abstaining from DROD-05-22.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. I would ask staff to confirm on the record that proper notice has been given to all parties in interest, as required by law, to all, on all matters before the commission tonight.
It has.
Okay. We'll note for the record, we have a late arrival.
And Hornsby.
Thank you, Ann. All right. Okay. With that, we'll begin with our request for continuance.
We actually have one item for consent agenda first, and we have not received any public comment or anybody on the sign-up sheet.
All right, members, we have before us a consent agenda item for S-8022 Element Subdivision. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes aye.
All right, and our first continued case has been continued by staff to the September meeting, and we have one case tonight requesting to continue. The petitioner is here in person.
Petitioner.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Al Cavanaugh, Cavanaugh's Engineering, representing SRC Contractors. They've still got a couple of details they're trying to work through on this, and they want to continue this until next month.
Any questions for petitioner? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Commission, we have before us a potential request for S-7122 Barnsley Trace. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes aye.
We'll move into our first companion case, S-7422 North River Marina Subdivision and Our subdivision is of North River Marina. It's consisting of two lots on approximately 14.7 acres, located at 8500 Mountbatten Road, Northeast, in Council District 3. This is the subject property. You all saw this last month for a PUD as well. And here's a large overview of that site with contours and without. We'll zoom in a little bit to the various areas down to the south. You can see that lot line running here. And then that continues up to the north, following around. And you see our public street frontage there as well. They have one variance request, and that is lot configuration, but that's to achieve public street frontage for both lots. Our rezoning associated with this is Spaces Management petitions to rezone approximately 3.37 acres, located at 8500 Mountbatten Road, Northeast, from R1 to BN, again in Council District 3. So that is going to be that lot that we're creating closest to the lake. Here's an aerial view of our subject property. Again, this is creating that commercial piece to the south, closest to the lake. Adjacent eastern property is Zoned BH. You can see it there on both sides of your screen. And the adjacent northern property is Zoned R1. All other eastern and southern adjacent property is the lake. The applicant is requesting to rezone to BN for the commercial operation of the Marina and Lakeside Restaurants. In our analysis of framework for this site, we found that it is identified as open space and recreation on the future land use character map, which can include city and county parks, as well as private golf courses, cemeteries, and similar. Objective 8.2 states that limited commercial services should also be accommodated for uses, including restaurants, boat rentals, or other services for lake visitors. Here's that property on the future land use character map, identified as parks and open space. And again, remember, as we're looking at this map, that we're just rezoning that smaller lot closest to the lake. And here is your list of permitted uses with BN. Do you have any questions for staff?
Thank you.
Petitioner is here in person.
Petitioner.
Jason Walker with TTL 2890 Rice Mine Road, Northeast, representing Spaces Management and Andy Turner. And we appreciate you hearing this, and again, this is a follow-up to the case last month and the detailed PUD submittal, but this kind of helps make it happen with the zoning and that subdivision. But we'd be happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Any questions for the petitioner? We understand why you're back and hate to have to come back to the process, but we kind of make sure we do it correctly.
Part of the process.
No questions, thank you, petitioner. Anyone sign up for or against? Anyone that publicly care to speak for or against this petition request? Okay. Having heard none, commission before us, we have two companion cases of S-7422 North River Marine Subdivision. You have a motion and a second.
Motion to approve.
Ms. Hornsby?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion approved. Commission, we have a force Z-1822, Spaces Management petitions to rezone approximately 3.37 acres from R1 to BN. You have a motion and a second.
Motion.
Ms. Prince?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
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 Yes, motion approved.
Our second companion case this evening is S-7022 Ridge at Timber Cove, accompanied by Z-1922. First up, our subdivision, S-7022, The Ridge at Timber Cove, resurvey of lots 1, 2, 3, and 4 of Beach Hollow and Unplatted Property. This is consisting of 33 townhome lots, two single-family residential lots, and three open-space lots on approximately 14.43 acres, located at 6201 New Watermelon Road, south of 6203 and 6204, 37th Court. This is in Council District 3. This is our subject property, Zoned R1. Now, one thing I do want to point out for you that you'll see on this map, this line actually jogs a little, so this is going to be the line of our subdivision right here. And here's our plat without contours, giving you a little more detail on what you're looking at here. To the north, we've got one single-family lot being added to the existing subdivision here, and then we've got one being added on New Watermelon as well. Looking south of that, we start to get into those townhome lots on either side of this new public street. And towards the back of the property, cul-de-sac and an open-space lot, and several more The applicant has provided renderings, you can see attached, of what that product will look like. And their variance requests include valley gutter in lieu of curving gutter, cul-de-sac length, and setbacks. They're requesting 20 on the front instead of 25. Accompanying that is the rezoning, Z-1922 petitions to rezone approximately 4.39 acres from R1 to R4. So looking at this map again, this is our site, but keep in mind that we're only rezoning this southernmost portion outlined here. The lot to the north will stay R1, as well as the one on New Watermelon. Here's some aerial imagery of that subject property. You can see the neighborhood above where that one single-family lot will be added. And this is looking to the south, so our subdivision will be primarily in this area This is the adjacent northern property that is part of this subdivision, but is remaining Zoned R1. This is the adjacent southern property, currently Zoned R1 and unzoned. And the applicant is requesting to rezone from R1 to R4 to allow for single-family townhouse development. In framework, we found that this does conform to the plan. This property is outlined as traditional neighborhood edge, which includes small lot-attached or multifamily dwellings that have a single-family scale. From this portion of framework, where we find traditional neighborhood edge, we found that in the five-year affordable housing study, residential demand in North Tuscaloosa is just expected to continue. And so, we are urged to integrate a range of housing, continue to model after neighborhoods like High Grove and towns of North River, again, creating a range of housing, mixed housing types. Here's that property on our future land use character map. And again, we're just talking about that southern portion, where that star is. Here is our list of permitted uses in R4. And our petitioner is here in person. Do you have any questions for staff?
Kaitlin, go back to that last draw.
Yep.
That's fine. Where you were. The two lots, the two lots that are interior to that subdivision at the top, those were not part of this. Is that part of this ownership?
So, let me go back for you.
Yes.
So...
Show me the buffer lot of you. That's...
This is your correct line. This is not part of this.
That is, that is not part of this, so the other lot to the right is?
That is, so...
But it will remain R1?
That's right. Let me go back for you.
Yeah.
This is probably your best view of that.
Right.
Lot 34.
Okay. I thought I remembered that going up in the subdivision.
And Lot 33 are going to be single-family R1 lots.
Any other questions for staff?
Show, show me one more time the outline of the petition lot below, R4.
That's what I thought. So it's just that rectangle?
That's right.
Okay.
The, the lot that Mr. Harrison is talking about to the left of the one that's part of the subdivision?
Mm-hmm.
Is it, this already, is it R1 now?
It's R1 now. Somebody could build a house on it today. They just haven't.
It's R1, and the other one will remain R1.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Oh, it's R1 right now.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Petitioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Brock Quarter with the Builders Group, 1307 25th Avenue. As usual, Kaitlin did a good job of explaining everything. I would like to hit on a few points for some of the questions that you guys asked. We, we are developing, proposing to develop this site with a pretty strict mind toward making sure we buffer against the existing R1 that's there. Kaitlin, can I go back to, how do I go back? Go back to the submitted... So we've, we've gone to fairly great extent to make sure we've surrounded what's there with R1. While she's doing that, with the knowledge that what's south of us, there we go, with the knowledge of what's south of us is identified in the framework plan, is, I think, don't let me butcher the word, but it's a commercial use of some type, neighborhood commercial maybe, or, anyway, that site is designated in framework to be some sort of commercial use. So, you know, in planning, we talk a lot about transitioning from commercial to R1 residential, and we felt like this was a good site to do this. So, again, this lot here, and this lot here, remaining R1. We're creating this one, but it's staying R1. So we've, and then back here, this area is all natural, going to stay natural, because that's part of the beauty of our site here. It is really a pretty site. We're only developing on the southwest portion. The topography drops off a pretty good bit on the northeast parts of it. So, very low density. We only have 33 townhome units on about 14 acres, pretty low impact from that standpoint, and I am happy to answer any questions that you have.
You said you're going to buffer, the new lot you're creating is going to be R1s. It's obviously going to stay as is, right? The ones to the north.
Yes, sir. The two R1 lots that kind of jut into the existing...
You're creating a new R1 lot, right?
Well, those two actually are in place today. This, this lot here to this lot over here.
Yeah.
It actually comes down in here and has a portion of it that does this. Doesn't really make a lot of sense for that to be part of that lot. It would be better to preserve it long-term as open space, as additional buffer there. So, but those three lots that all surround that one as well, those will all be R1, staying R1.
That's, that's what I was asking about.
Yes, sir. It is staying R1.
Right, what am I looking at on the backside of your houses? You've got a hash line in those lots. What is that hash line for?
You talking about right here?
Yeah.
That's the setback. That's the proposed setback. Rear setback. Staff also requested us to give this access to the property to the south, to try to keep from having too many accesses on New Watermelon Road. As y'all are very well aware, the city's now, I think, reached agreement with all the property owners on McRice Ferry, and I hear that the project should go to bid pretty soon, so...
So let me ask you, with that being setback line, those, those houses to the right and left where you just drew your arrow, as they will have a less, smaller setback?
Say that for me one more time.
There's six houses that are perpendicular to the other ones. You've got, it looks like a smaller setback on the back. I'm looking at that hash line correct.
Yes, sir. They have a little bit smaller setback on the rear of those property lines.
No issue, okay.
We're modeling this, I may have said this, we're modeling this after a project we completed in Homewood about four or five years ago.
What's the price range of these? Score?
Probably going to be around 300, 300,000.
Any other questions for petitioner?
I did want to jump in really quick. We had one public comment asking a question on whether these would be for sale, or if you would maintain ownership.
We're building these for sale.
Is that in addition to the written comment that came in?
That's part of that one you have in your hand.
For the record, there is one written comment that has been submitted to the record from Ms. Lauren Lashley, just for the record.
I think there are one of those comments, can you clear this for me? There was a question about drainage. Can we go to the topo one, please, ma'am? So, our site does not, also does not drain toward North Park. Everything drains this way, right here. And our detention pond is going to be right in this area here, so we should not be creating any additional drainage concerns.
Any other questions for petitioner? Thank you for now.
Thank you very much.
We do have someone who has signed up.
Mr. Chairman, we have Mr. Bob McNally has signed up. Address?
Name and address for the record, please.
Greetings. I'm Bob McNally. Live at 5920 New Watermelon Road, kind of catty corner from the development. My main interest honestly is the traffic. Traffic already backs up, you know, past my driveway. My neighbor, Kelsey Fair, lives pretty much directly across, and a house is built in early 1890s. But our collective interest is that we have some kind of buffer. We have trees there. I think, as I said, development is likely in this neighborhood or in this area over the years, and we embrace that as long as it's tasteful. And I think the renditions look good to me, but I think a buffer to the road would be an important thing, and the continuation or the McRice Valley Ferry Road project, I think, would go a long way. We're adding 100 cars, maybe, with this development, maybe more. I don't know how many cars per bedroom, but that's pretty significant for a road that has one access across the spillway, you know? All of you are aware of that. So that's my basic concern, is that the landscape buffer between the road would be adequate, nice. I like the idea of the, I think probably because of topography, that the back area would not be developed, but, you know, we've lived across the street from a pristine area for a long time. My wife's grandfather lived, built the house we're in. He was a forester for Jack Warner, and was out there before the road was paved. But, at any rate, that's my main thing, is that the integrity of the area be maintained as much as possible, and consideration for traffic be paramount. That's all I have to say.
Sure. Anyone else care to speak for or against before we bring the petitioner back up? Again, anyone speak for or against? Ms. Corey, you want to, you've heard the one gentleman's issues or concerns. Do you want to address those for us?
Yes, sir. If you will, I'll try to use this thing again. We actually do have some open space areas along New Watermelon Road. There's one here that will be landscape, and this area here, they range from 20 to 40 feet, I think. So both of those areas will be landscape. We want to try to create a little bit of buffer ourselves for the people living on this road. The other one is regarding traffic. Mr. Barnum with TTL is here. He, he has done some more preliminary work on that, if y'all would like him to come up, so...
Can you go to a little more detail on your landscaping vision, or will there be a, will it be a gated or some type of brick wall for the road and the...
We haven't proposed a brick wall. I'd prefer to do some kind of landscaping, shrub hedge or something with some sporadic stuff in between, taller, maybe some trees. I'm not sure where the landscaping ordinance comes in on this, but we would certainly have to comply with that, as far as whatever's required there. But we're going to want some kind of separation there. We just, we, we have not designed a landscaping plan yet.
Do you have any signage going in that area?
We, we will have a small monument sign.
Okay, it's a small...
Yeah.
Right, when, if this is passed, when will y'all starting? When do you think they'll be ready to sell? 12, 18 months from now? What? But you got a little timeline. The reason I'm asking that, the next thing I was going to do was, I was going to ask Mr. Garner, the city engineer, what the timeline is on McRice Ferry Road, to where they, you know, they're going to open up, or somewhere close to each other, and talk about traffic issues.
We probably have three to four months' worth of design work to do, to even be able to get to a point where we can bid the infrastructure for this development. My gut tells me that would take probably until, we probably would be able to bid it before the end of the year, and then that work will probably take six months. So you're talking middle of next year before we're able to start any home, or any of the townhomes. So you're looking at end of next year, most likely, for the first units being ready.
Mike, you know what the timeline is on Mc, or what you hope the timeline is on McRice Ferry Road?
That, we're anticipating that it will go to bid in October, and what will happen with the bids, who knows? And I think the construction period for the project is a little over two years.
Well, we, we're not, McRice Ferry Road will not affect this part of New Watermelon Road.
No, no, it doesn't, but it alleviates everything having to go across the dam, which was one of the, your gentleman's concerns.
Maybe six to 12 months difference in this development opening and McRice Ferry Road opening.
That's probably a reasonable guess.
And we won't have all 33 of them ready at the end of next year. We're going to, you know, we're going to build them out as they sail, so you're probably talking five to six, maybe seven units by that time.
Again, focus on a sale product, which would be private family, so you figure two, two-point-something cars per, you're looking at 66 to 70 cars potentially.
Yeah, the peak traffic, Mr. Barnum had it for AM, PM, 19 and 23 during the peak hours, respectively, I believe, so not a ton of traffic generated off of this many units.
Any other questions with petitioner? Okay. I don't think any, brought any new information. Would anyone care to speak again relative to this matter? Okay, having heard none, at this point, we will close, and is there any discussion... And is there any discussion, any questions from the commission or any comments? I mean, I'll say that, you know, one of the things that we do talk a lot about, we're gonna hear a lot about going forward is about the workforce housing. And, you know, we always, we were first seeing a lot of the workforce housing happen on the outskirts of the city. And this is District 3, probably one of the more popular areas, but this area needs to have some workforce housing as well. I mean, we shouldn't be walling off ourselves from other, you know, communities getting this type of product. And again, with it being on the outer edges of what, I forgot what you defined it as earlier, but, um, again, I think it's, this builder's putting good product on the, on the city of Tuscaloosa. And I think this is a fitting property and development for this area. Those are my comments. Anyone else? Okay, all right, commission, before us, we have S 7022, The Ridge at Timber Cove. 33 townhomes and two single-family residential lots. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
I'm sorry, there was, I'm sorry, I get the variance request on the record. S 7022 with three variance requests, Valley Gutter in lieu of Carbin Gutter, cul-de-sac length setbacks.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Um, the waiver for the cul-de-sac length is not needed anymore. The stub street that they added to the south negates the request for waiver ruling.
And while I got you, while I got you, Mr. Garner, on the other two issues, engineering, have you any issues with?
No, sir.
Thank you very much. All right, back to S 7022, three with two variance requests, Valley Gutter in lieu of Carbin Gutter, and our setbacks from 25 to 20. Have a motion and a second.
Motion.
Okay.
Beginning with Ms. Hornsby.
Yes.
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 Yes, motion approved. Commission, before us, we have Z 18, I'm sorry, Z 1922. Brock Quarter rezones from R1 to R4. Have a motion and a second.
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Prince.
Yes.
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 Yes, motion approved.
All right, so that was both of our companion cases for this evening. Moving into number eight, Other Business, DROD 522. Paul Williams with Baywood Hotels petitions to construct a five-story hotel on the property located, uh, south of 2117 Jack Warner Parkway, north of 2104 and 2204 Fourth Street. This is zoned BCDROD in Council District 1. You all saw this previously in October of 2020, and it was approved at that time. Their approval expired before they got any building permits and before they recorded their subdivision as well. So, their subdivision was actually consent agenda tonight, and this is for their DROD proposal.
And nothing's changed since we heard this.
There is a little bit of change. I'll walk you through it. Again, here's the subject property and an aerial view. Some additional aerial imagery for you. This is probably the best one to look at for where this is. It is essentially this area right here. In the DROD narrative, they outline that they will construct a new five-story hotel, six stories including the basement level with 101 rooms. There's a big focus in this submittal on green living. So, they've got some things like electric vehicle charging stations, bike borrowing. They've also got a bar area and dining for the guests. The site plan shows 94 parking spaces and a primarily brick building with metal railings. In their DROD narrative, they outline the focus on healthy green eating, and to that end, they are providing a small kitchenette in each room. The Architectural Review Committee found that this meets the proposal, that this meets the intent of the Downtown Riverfront Overlay District Standards and Guidelines. Again, here's your subject property. Here's your site plan. You can see the building in the center, some parking in the front, a drive aisle along that south side, and additional parking in the rear. These first two images are of the previous proposal, just to jog your memory. And we've got kind of a half basement level here. This is probably the biggest change from the previous proposal, is that now it is a full basement instead of just half. So, moving into their drawings for this submittal, this is the new building, looking from the drive aisle on the south side, the front of the building. And then this is from the north side, so you can see that whole basement level here. Other than that, we've got some small architectural changes, but for the most part, the same proposal. These are the images they provided in their previous submittal of the interior and of the rooms themselves. Here are some floor plans. This one is of the basement level. This is the first floor. You can see the large lobby area, a small fitness area and the kitchen. This is the second floor, open to the lobby below. And then moving into the floors above that, this is an example of one that has a comments area then at the end of the hall. And again, this is the building. The petitioner should be here in person. Do you have any questions for staff?
Any questions for staff?
Nope, thank you. Petitioner?
Hello, I am Paul Williams with Baywood Hotels. Pleasure to be here before you commissioners, and thank you for your time to hear our project. I'm here representing the element essentially west of 305 21st Avenue. And I guess in summary, it might help to just give you an idea of, I guess, how we got here and the time and things of that nature. I think everybody realizes COVID happened and it kinda put everybody a little bit of a step back. But our commitment to the project never changed. We still are essentially bringing for you the same project we did before. We wanna do it, we wanna move with it. This project and this site is just a bear. I mean, there are so many challenges from every different direction. It took a long time to do our due diligence, really understand what we had, all the details, you know, address those details with modifications, changes, just to make it work. We did decide to make the tough decision and go through an architectural change. It took a little time. But to give you an idea, I mean, there's a large water main that runs through the site that we had to test it just to find out where it was so we could know where to work to it. Just understanding the dirt situation on the project was a challenge because if you've all seen it, I mean, it's a wooded cliff, so getting the drill rig out there isn't exactly easy. We had to study that with our engineers. And then we even had to work with adjacent property owners to gain access just to even be able to get tested where we needed them to understand what was going on with the dirt. And when we did so, we learned we needed to, we had poor dirt, so it made sense. Well, let's do a full basement instead of a half basement. And then that affected our design. We had to comply with that. And we have overhead power lines and guy wires and poles and the utilities I mentioned, and the hill and the walls. It just took a tremendous amount of time to figure out, understand all the details in order to go forward properly because we didn't wanna just fly by the seat of our pants, get something approved and go out there and try to build this thing. Really, we're at a point now where we're much further along, we've been through the design, we really understand it. We wanna move forward, gain our approvals and go build it, so.
Hearing you talk about the challenge of the site, and I obviously know the area, and it's, the dirt's probably very questionable. When you came before us before, had you thoroughly understood that at that point? Or did you just now?
It, we understood it to a point, I mean, but, in other words, it was a matter of further detail. I mean, we had done some investigation, but like I said, it took a while just to figure even out how to get something into the hill. So, it's like, we kinda knew, but we had to spend more time to truly understand.
Any questions for petitioner, other, other questions?
Just curious, what is the material? I know what a common brick is, but the gray, what is that material?
We're looking at that as a, like a hard stucco.
Like stucco, okay.
What, you wanna ask that or?
I, I know we don't really address the parking issues downtown, but I couldn't figure out 101 rooms in 90-some parking places.
They actually, they are zoned BCDROD, so they have no parking requirement.
Yeah, I understand that. I just, it's to be like I have more parking places instead of less for rooms.
We've looked at this thing and we've maximized as wherever we could, we built walls, worked around guy wires and getting as many as we can. And in cases where if we have a sold-out situation, we'll work out a valet arrangement or something like that.
Let it be sold out when LSU's in town.
You'll also have employee parking as well, you gotta contend with. How many, how many employees will you have parking, you think, your projections on that?
I mean, at one time, most, most of the, largest would probably be around 12, but we can work with that one.
I mean, I know we're asked these questions, and technically, we don't really have to because it's zoned B C. So, you know, you have zero parking requirements, which we all know is not realistic. But it is something we think about because we hear it all the time from everyone about how challenging it is parking anywhere downtown. And when you bring in 94 rooms, it'll make it even more challenging. But that's not our purview here. Any other questions for the petitioner?
I guess I should apologize. I shouldn't have said it'd be sold out for LSU, but it will for Texas A&amp;M. Heard you say you was from Dallas, so.
No, I'm not. I'm from Dallas, I'm sorry. Another question, thank you. Uh, no one has signed up for or against, but anyone care to speak for or against this petition? Please come, come forward. Okay, no one has come forward. We'll close. We have seen this case with some small modification from previous approval. So, that being said, commission before us, we have DROD 0522, Paul Williams, Baywood Hotels, petition to construct a five-story hotel. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Prince?
Yes.
Yes.
Staying?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion approved.
We have one annexation this evening, annexing approximately two acres located at 15104 Burnt Pines Road. This is on the lake, up by the 69 Bridge. Here's an aerial view of that property. Uh, in framework, we outline various growth criteria areas. This is the lowest one, future service slash expansion areas. It is identified in framework as lakeside living. You can see it at that star there. And the petition is to annex into the city to be eligible to enroll in city schools. The evaluation criteria of annexing was outlined, and we addressed whether various departments would be able to provide services. Their comments are listed here. Tuscaloosa Fire will be able to. All other departments had no issues. I believe the petitioner should be here in person.
Okay, thank you. Uh, petitioner? Name and address for the record.
Brandon Dixon, 15104 Burnt Pines Road.
Care to add any comments to staffs?
No, I mean, exactly the whole point is to try to keep, uh, try to keep our two boys enrolled in the Tuscaloosa City Schools that we're very happy with.
Any questions for petitioner?
That answers my question. They're already in school, so.
That's right, school's already started. Thank you very much.
That's great.
Anyone care to speak for or against this petition request? Having heard none, do I have a motion for A N 0622, annexation of two acres located at 15104 Burnt Pines Road?
So moved.
Ms. Hornsby?
Yes.
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 Yes, welcome to the city.
Moving into our preliminary plots, first one is S 6822, Blue Heron Subdivision, a resurvey of lots 1, 2, and 3, Blue Heron Properties, consisting of nine residential lots on approximately 22.23 acres. This is located at and around 13458 North River Farms Drive, not in city limits. Here is the subject property, adjacent to the lake, again, not in city limits. Here's an aerial view. We've got some additional aerial imagery as well. The existing marina and some homes off to the side. You can see several driveways going back now. And that cul-de-sac there is the end of the public right-of-way. This is our preliminary plat with contours and without. And I know this is pretty tough to read, so we'll zoom in on the various areas. To the south, you've got the entrance and the additional public right-of-way, which is gonna follow this gray area here will be dedicated public right-of-way. Those boxes that you see off to the side are septic lots for the lots that are closer to the lake within that 300-foot setback. Going up to the north, we've got several lots over here accessing off of a shared drive. They have provided a turnaround for fire here. And we have one lot over here that you'll see a request from, a variance from public street frontage because there's really just no other way to do anything with that. It's best to make it its own lot so that it could be purchased to the property, purchased by the property owner to the south. So, there are the full list of variance requests, sidewalks, capsure, street cross-section, and public street frontage.
We're okay with the request.
Can we back up to one of the very first pictures that was aerial? Probably the very first picture there. Looking at those lots that are next to it, they're somewhat flag lots. Thank you. Petitioner?
Jason Walker, 2890 Rice Mine Road Northeast with TTL, representing the citizens on this project. I guess, you know, some of the questions, especially related to that lot 6, as she noted, it's a, I mean, it's just a remnant piece basically from the acquisition of Lake Tuscaloosa, and it's divided by that, that slough there by elevation. So, there is no desire to develop that, and it can't be developed because there is no suitable physical access or sewer accessibility or anything. So, that's just shown because it had to have a lot number. So, there's no, no other story to that other than it just had to hold a spot. If you may recall, this was submitted last month, and the cul-de-sac, the new cul-de-sac is proposed to be extended further to the north, really to the furthest north point it can be from a topographic standpoint. I mean, if it was suitable, that's a good example on the topo, if there was suitable terrain, it would go all the way back and be probably a little more conventional, I guess. The, uh, the three lots that in scale would look smaller here on the, the front of the lake are 95-foot in width, which would be similar to waterfall subdivision. And the lake lots there on waterfall, so that gives some context. Then obviously, when you look at that aerial, you can tell the marina site itself is a very nice prime kinda point lot. It's obviously a little larger. This area, I mean, I know even going back, I'm not sure how many years and the previous attempts at one point before even these existing flag lots were developed, you know, there were, I can remember being in this room and there being- you know, there were, I, I can remember being in this room and there being some heated meetings about condos and different things that have been proposed over the years, but it is an existing commercial use. I think there have been questions, you know, about, uh, the onsite septic systems here, which everybody on this end of town, at, at the end of Sharp's Lake Road or anywhere on Sharp's Lake Road is on onsite sewage, and so there would be more of that. And, you know, I guess there, there's typical concerns maybe about drainings and things, but we just don't have that and it's relatively low density in terms of lots, but also this private drive that accesses the, the four primary lake lots. Lot number, um,
I like those, I like those that you're talking about so we, everybody can.
I'm sorry, what?
Use, use the pen and highlight as you're talking about those lots. Just so everybody can understand in the audience and some up here as well.
Got it. I was going to resort to that. So lot five, uh, has a nice location for a, a house spot there. There's some terrain there that'll require a, a steep drive, but it's de- developable. You know, I guess most recently, these three lots in terms of the flag orientation and connecting to the cul-de-sac, there was a question at one point about doing away with this cul-de-sac, so I guess you could just have a road, a public road that meandered through here. But because of similar, the, the, the frontage requirements we have to be public street frontage here are the same issues that you have because these flag lots were developed on that cul-de-sac and so you can't, you can't just make that cul-de-sac go away unless the additional lot owners wanted to change the orientation of the front of their lots. So you'll have kind of a, a bulb type cul-de-sac that'll be part of this, that sometimes you plan on that when you're planning out subdivisions and things anyway, but that will just be made part of that alignment of that public drive. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I guess, I, I think it's lot three next to the big storage building, whatever that is.
Right here.
Yeah, is, is the big building going away because it's crossing the line?
Oh yeah, it, it definitely is going away, the foundation, superstructure, everything on that will go away.
Okay, any questions for petitioner? Thank you, petitioner. Mr. Vice, anybody sign up to speak for or against?
Nope, everybody's clear.
No one has signed up, but would anyone care to speak for or against this petition? If so, please come forward. Having heard none. Close. Permission, we, we, this came, we sent this back for some modifications in the engineering of representative, has come back with his necessary changes, engineering has no issues with. So bringing the case up, it is S sixty-eight twenty-two, Ble- Blue Heron subdivision. It does have four variance requests of sidewalks, cap sewer, street cross-section, and public street frontage, frontage, which engineering has no issues with. That being said, we have a motion in a second.
Motion approved.
Ms. Prince?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion approved.
Our next case is S seventy-two twenty-two, uh, eight oh eight Gene Stallings, and that has been updated now to be called, uh, Enclave on eighth. Eight oh eight Gene Stallings is actually an address of an adjacent property, not located at this site, but for the sake of keeping everything consistent for legal notice, we kept it, so, small disclaimer there. Uh, this includes lots one, two, three, four, and five, block ten TCHRE. This is consisting of sixteen townhome lots and one open space lot on approximately point nine one acres located at eight oh four Red Drew Avenue. This is in Council District Four. Here is that property. This is an old aerial image, those buildings are actually not existing anymore. You can see Gene Stallings on one side, Red Drew on the other. And here's the proposed subdivision, one large common space lot in the middle here. And then sixteen townhome lots. This is a rendering sketch, I'm going to flip this to the side for you also so you can see it a little clearer. So we've got townhomes that face the street on either side. They access through a shared drive and they've got parking behind. You'll see three parking spots behind and each townhome has a two-car garage. Their variance requests include right-of-way dedication on Red Drew and Gene Stallings.
Engineering?
We're okay with the request.
Thank you, petitioner?
Chairman, members of the commission, Al Cabin, this is Cabinet Engineer representing, uh, CBA Properties, this is Chase A. Cox. Uh, and Caitlin's pretty well covered everything for us, but this is a, just, it's just a straightforward townhome subdivision. We're at eighty beds, uh, if you were maxing the site out by the zoning, you could probably get to a hundred and sixty with a elevated, elevated building over, over structured parking, but anyway, just, uh, sixteen lots with, with townhomes, they'll be, most likely they'll just remain under one ownership and maybe be rented. But just townhouse rules, we have to do a subdivision just because of the definition of a townhouse. Happy to answer any questions if there are.
Are there not yet any renderings or?
Uh, I do not have any.
What the exterior of the building will look like?
I do not have any renderings of them, um, they're, the size of the buildings we took from Elmwood, if you, y'all remember, we looked at those a couple of years ago when Chase redeveloped Elmwood. So these buildings are that format, these are two feet wider, three or four feet deeper, so these are a little bigger than, than those. So they'll have a porch on the front, they'll have a, a garage door in the back, and then the pedestrian door in the back as well. So looking from the street frontage, you'll see a series of townhomes with, with, with front porches.
I know I'm overlooking something, but I, I see that you've got a garage with two cars and then spaces for three more cars on a pad.
Yep, because it's a, again, because definition of a townhome, I've, I've got to treat it like a single-family house, so each lot has to include its own parking. So that's why they're laid out that way.
So the nine parks, underneath it, it has nine parks, and then in the middle one, six parks, and then another nine parks. I can't, I know I'm probably miscounting. Well, no, it's really more than that, I guess. Is it ni- is it nine parks for the first two?
Oh, you're looking at the text right here.
Yeah.
So all we're doing there is numbering these parks and a bay, there's a maximum of twelve parks per bay before I have a landscape aisle.
So that's not, that's not the actual number, that's, that's the parks on the ro- on the road.
So this is, so they're going to be able to park on the street? I mean, is this, is this, it's, it's a, this easement, it, I guess it'll be paved?
Yes, yes, so, so the easement is their access for the parking.
You're, hey, you're putting two cars, they're stacked parking, you know, we put two cars, I guess, in a garage underneath.
In a garage.
And then the other three will be outside. So those numbered parks he's showing is just the parks on the street, it doesn't include the parks underneath.
Okay, it goes, oh, I see now, it goes to the landscape aisle.
Correct.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was trying to make it.
I was making it easy for the staff and I keep up.
Got it now, thank you.
Well, you really confused us though. We got to count, count on our hands and toes.
All we got to do is look at that. Now we are adding parking, um, here. Where we do it, this is a street improvement there, and there's only, uh, there's only five parks out there, we're able to count two of them. We're right, without that, we've got the site fully for it.
At least you parked them inside the, inside the property as opposed to doing this on the outs- outside.
Al, this, this minor, it may not be anything major, but, uh, to the south of lot ten, that little jog in the sidewalk, what is going on with that?
Yeah, that's an existing sidewalk.
Okay.
That is how it's there and I, looking at it, I have no earthly idea why it was built that way.
Okay, I'll just.
Square jog. Usually in these, we wind up replacing most or all of the sidewalk anyway, just, a lot of it's, I mean, it's fifty years old and it's, uh, uh, sometimes during construction, of course, you damage it as well, so.
It's a way to make that straight, I mean, if it.
Actually, when I looked at that, when the, when my crew had it drawn, cause I'm like, that, that can't be, but it is.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any more questions for the petitioner? Thank you. Anyone care to speak for or against this petition? All right, having heard none, commission, before us, we have S seventy-two twenty-two, eight oh eight Gene Stallings Avenue with one variance request for right-of-way dedication on Red Drew and Gene Stallings, engineering has no issues with. We have a motion in a second.
Motion?
Second.
Ms. Hornsby?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion approved.
Next we have S seventy-three twenty-two, Reichhold Price subdivision, consisting of three residential lots on approximately fifty-eight point one-three acres. This is located at fifty-two hundred Reichhold Way, it is not in city limits. Here we see our subject property, it's, uh, in the Holt area. And an aerial image of that property. Now, this is our preliminary plat with all fifty-eight acres in there, but I'll break it down a little bit so you can see it better. To the south is primarily where that land is being divided. As it sits today, there's a road that runs through what is just one lot. The county confirmed that that is a county-maintained road, so to that end, they're creating its own lot there. And then they are also creating one lot down here. That odd box that you see in the middle right here is existing and is not part of a subdivision. But it is all of the land surrounding it. And they'll have access off of, uh, Reichhold Circle. Their variance requests include sidewalks, half-street improvements, and scale of the map.
Engineer?
We're in agreement with those requests.
Back up that real quick on the number of lots. So we're going from one to three, right?
That's right.
How come it says consisting of two residential lots?
Um, that might.
On the.
Looking at S seventy-three.
S seventy-three twenty-two. Would it be three lots?
It is three.
Catch.
Y'all getting a B minus tonight, I'm telling you. Two. B plus, man.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Al Cabinist with Cabinet Engineer representing Carl Price. Uh, Carl owns this property, when Carl bought it, this had already been sold by the previous owner, so it's just, it's just floating out there. We are, we are providing the right-of-way now, the county is, Caitlin mentioned, the county doesn't maintain the road, but they had no dedicated right-of-way. So part of the subdivision process, we're just planting the right-of-way there. Once we plant that right-of-way, of course, we've created that lot, um, just because it's all by itself now. The, the purpose of this, all this subdivision is doing is to allow Carl to sell that, that lot right there. We just have to include the whole tract because it's.
Okay, any questions for petitioner? Bring back a variance request, please. Anyone care to speak for or against this subdivision request, or pl- plaque request? Having heard none. For us, commission, we have S seventy-three twenty-two, Reichhold Price subdivision, two lot, three lots, with three variance requests of sidewalks, half-street improvements, and map scale, engineering has no issues with. We have a motion in a second.
So moved.
Ms. Prince?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion approved.
Our next case is S seventy-five twenty-two, Probst Road, Road subdivision, consisting of four lots on approximately sixty-three point seven-two acres, located at one zero seven two five Probst Road, this is not in city limits. Here you can see that vicinity map, south of town. And here's an aerial image of the property. Right now it is split on either side of Probst Road. Part of that subdivision is to create that lot four on the other side. Here's our preliminary plat with contours. And without. This is the lot we're creating on that side. Their variance requests include half-street improvements, cap sewer, lot configuration, drainage study, and street frontage. That street frontage is for lot one. There is not any access here, you can see that lot line. They do have a note, pretty small there, that says lot one will be retained by the developer and not developed. Lot one is going to be accessed from the south.
Engineering on the variance request?
We're in agreement with the variance request except for the lot one street frontage. The subdivisions regulations are pretty clear that each lot should have public street frontage. And we just don't see a reason why this can't be accomplished.
Okay. Uh, petitioner, are anybody questions for engineering on that?
I just wondered, is he getting access now from the gravel road that's shown on it?
Probably. Yeah.
Let me, Mike, let me, let me ask a question. If, I, I'm assuming that lot one, what I heard, the owner, the developer owned lot one and the lot to the south, correct?
Yes, that is correct, same owner.
And if they retain, if he retains ownership, does he have street frontage? I guess from the city standpoint, we're worried that he might sell it off and develop to a later date. From, what, what's our concern? With not, him not having street frontage?
It, that is a component of the subdivision regulations and requirements. If he says he's not ever going to sell it off, that he's going to retain it. Why can't he include the parcel to the south? So that he has the public road frontage.
So.
It, it's y'all's decision to make. I'm, I'm just pointing out that that's what the regulations are and just don't see a reason for us to, to grant this and set, you know, we talk about setting precedents.
And specifically what Mike is talking about, as it stands today, that this lot does have, uh, street frontage.
The, the lower lot, the lower lot. Yeah, it is on, it's on Probst Road, right? Great, okay.
Mister, my name's Chris Centel, Centel Engineering, six three nine Black Bears Way. Um, I'd like to address lot one. Lot one, if you go back to the terrain, if you can see, and I will do my best, how do you operate this? You go back to the contour of the plat with contours. This is a ravine and the current access for this, this side of that ravine is that gravel road. We are proposing a thirty-foot, to record a thirty-foot ingress egress easement that follows that gravel road to Probst Road. And we, we submitted that with our revised plat. I'd like to also point out that the, the developer, we are developing one hundred percent of the LLC, it's Lollipop LLC. The owner to the south is Alan and Amy Page, and Mr. Page is a member of the LLC. He's going to retain lot one, and matter of fact, we, we prob- I mean, if, if we could do, you know, have our wishes, we wouldn't include this in the subdivision anyway. The sole purpose for this subdivision is for him to sell lot two and three to two friends so they can develop single-family residential homes. Mr. Page is in the process of building his retirement home now, just to the south of that line, right there where it says Alan and Amy Page. Mr. Page is in the process of building his retirement home now, just to the south of that line, right there where it says Alan and Amy Page, right in here. So as you can see, there's, he intends to completely keep lot one in his, in his possession and not sell it. If you can see, uh, this is what, and I, I didn't have time to do this.
Sure.
This, the blue is what Alan and Amy Page own now.
Do me a favor, why don't you leave one here, go back to the microphone and describe what you're trying to, so you can be on the record. I wanna see one of those.
Pardon?
You need a copy of that?
No, I, I don't need it back. Alright, the, the one that shows the development in green is what the Lollipop LLC owns and what we're having to develop because we're in the PJ. The blue piece of property is Mr. and Mr. Mrs. Page's personal property. It's where they're building their, their, their home currently. And if you can see, when we're done with the subdivision, all of the blue is what they're gonna retain as an undeveloped property. They want, they, they, they have a farm and they wanna keep it a farm. And in order to keep lot one from being landlocked, we, we are proposing a thirty-foot ingress egress easement that follows the current road to access that side.
If they're gonna keep it, why won't they just put it in with their current?
Because the LLC owns it.
The LLC owns this portion, the portion to the south is Mr. and Ms. Page together. That's two different ownerships. We're including everything the LLC owns because it's in the planning jurisdiction.
I, I guess, looking at this, I, originally when I looked at it to begin with, I wondered why you just couldn't put an access easement under lot three to them, lot one. But that ownership right there, Probst Road, is not their lot, right?
There's a small triangle piece that's not there.
So you couldn't, you couldn't touch, you couldn't make that work?
I, I, if we could get that, yes, we, we would love to, but he wasn't able to. He was able to attain lot, what we're proposing is lot four. He had to purchase that so we could have road frontage.
Mike, I know we talked about precedents, but, um, i- is a thirty-foot easement, would, that wouldn't be enough to develop that, that forty acres into a residential? Would it be, would that prohibit further development?
Yeah, I do, I really don't know, uh, if he wanted to turn the thirty-foot easement into a public street, it doesn't conform to our regulations or the county's for a minimum right. No, thirty-foot would not.
No, it, uh, we, we kept it at a bare minimum just to show that we're not developing lot one. There's no infrastructure available to that anyway. It would cost a small fortune just to get it. The terrain is pretty steep in that, with that, uh, line that I've got circled.
So the LLC purchased the property that's currently gonna be subdivided?
Yes, ma'am.
As the whole, as the whole plot in a meets and bounds description, is that correct?
Yes.
So that blue portion has never been under the ownership of the Pages individually?
Pardon?
The, the blue part in the parts you're subdividing?
The blue part is currently Alan and Amy Page's personal property.
I'm talking about this blue part, right up here.
When they bought it from, from the Probst family, that it was included all in, is, is different parcels, that's correct. It had a different, it was a different deed, but they, when we, we split it off intentionally because we, he wanted to sell these two lots.
I think what she's trying to ask is who did Lollipop buy from?
Oh, Lollipop was transferred to Lollipop from Alan and Amy Page, that's correct.
So why didn't you have to subdivide it at that point if it was a meets and bounds description?
It was a separate deed. It had a separate deed booking page.
Okay.
Mike, is there a way to make this work? I'm not the engineer.
It looks simp, it looks simple to me, include the parcel to the south and make lot one a larger track. If they have no intent to sell or no intent to develop, uh, this just becomes a larger parcel that their house will sit on.
So then the Probst would buy, well, no, the Pages would buy that lot one from the LLC. That's, that's kinda where I was thinking earlier.
Yeah, I mean, they, they owned it and they just transferred the ownership to an LLC, um.
Alright, I'm gonna be a, I'm gonna be on their side for a second, say, well, what's that gonna cost me? You know, I gotta get, I gotta, I gotta, who all, who all I gotta get approvals on for doing that from the standpoint of the, you're buying from LLC, how do you? That's a, that's a lawyer question.
Well, and I, I, I guess the other question is, is the LLC owned by, I haven't heard that the LLC's same ownership, or they're part of it, but they may not afford it.
The, the DOA we have for Lollipop LLC is Alan Page.
Yeah.
No, he owns.
Ms. Page is not included in the LLC.
Take it?
Ms. Page is not included in the LLC.
Now we're getting to that issue, so. I mean, it seems like you're, you're attempting to ease our minds about the, the road width and read future development.
But you also see our situation about future precedent.
I, I see your situation and, and I respectfully request that the planning board approve this based on the fact that the lot to the south would be, plus the forty acres, would be two hundred and sixty acre lot. And, I mean, if he's gonna retain it, plus I'm giving it a thirty-foot ingress egress easement so it won't be landlocked in, in the event that something happens. But like I said, Mr. and Ms. Page are building their house just to the south of that line. And it's, I mean, it's their residential home. It's not a vacation home, it's not a farmhouse. It's their permanent retirement home. And, you know, they, you wouldn't want a lot of infrastructure going right beside your house. I mean, that would be creating a problem for yourself in, in that situation.
But if you went back to what the engineer, staff engineer was talking about, you wouldn't have to take up what about, what, six hundred feet maybe, plus or minus? Just to, if we go to the south?
If you go to the south, the subdivision regulations are gonna make me incorporate the entire two hundred and forty acres in lot one.
Okay.
It's not in, it's in its own deed. These are two separate deeds.
Gotcha, okay. I was trying to make, well, you didn't have to do all of them.
It is, uh, is there, maybe this is, I'm asking the same question. Is there, since they own the prop- property to the south of lot three, is there an access, available access right there?
The, the, I'm, I'm proposing, I'm proposing, I'm proposing, if, where's the revised plat?
Yeah, that's exactly right. I'm trying, I'm glad you clarified.
If you, I, on the, I showed the ingress egress easement on the revised plat.
Do we have it?
Do you have the, the full plat that we can show? This is just zoomed in. The ingress egress easement follows the existing path of the road here. Just like this. Where, and this is where it's accessed from now. I mean, that's the only way you can access that side of the property now. And we're gonna, we're gonna, you know, keep that so we can have public road frontage with an easement. Which we don't exceed the, the requirements the county has on thirty-foot ingress easement. The county allows for this to, to take place with this size piece.
Who's drawing that, Mike? Is that you drawing?
I drew that line to indicate a flag lot, create, create, create a flag on lot one that gives public road frontage, uh, to Probst Road. That would be the boundary line between lot one and three. They can still access lot one however they want to. But they now meet the subdivision regulations, no different than what you see with lot two.
How, how much road frontage would I need?
Thirty feet, thirty feet.
I wait, he, he said he would be willing to do that.
I think that, that's our answer, because I think our precedent setting of, that's our, that's our issue.
I apologize, we, we really do. I mean, we, we wouldn't include, like I said, I wouldn't include the forty acre lot into the subdivision if I didn't have to.
Don't doubt you, but back to precedent setting, if we did it and then something, when it arrived, then we're on the hook for it later on and plus, somebody else with the same variance request and, and we accept the precedent, so that's our.
I mean, from our standpoint, we're truly a non-logical way to accomplish this. I know this is a little non-characteristic, I mean, it works.
Yeah.
I agree.
Sure. That being said, you wanna continue, you're gonna need to continue to get this drawn in front of engineers. Or do you wanna, I?
Can we approve subject two?
If he says that's okay, I'm perfectly fine with it.
I ain't for him to have to come back. I don't think you need to have an accurate drawing to approve.
I, I, I concur, so I hate to do that to you, it's just more time, but I think it's to everybody's benefit. So, ask for formal continuance?
Yeah, uh, yes.
Is, is that something staff can approve if we?
Yeah, that's a good question.
Pass it with the contingency?
Well, okay.
Okay.
It'd be the front, that's right, case continues.
We'll get you out of here quick.
Alright, sorry, commission, we've had a tense request for S seventy-five twenty-two Probst Road. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Thank you.
Our next one is S seventy-six twenty-two, a resurvey of lot two Woodruff Industrial Park. This is consisting of two industrial lots on approximately four point four acres, located at four five four one and four five six one Jug Factory Lane. This is in Council District Seven. Here you can see that vicinity map. Uh, this is near the Skyland and McFarland intersection. Half of Jug Factory Road. This property is zoned to be H. Here you can see a aerial image and how the lot lines are today. So what we'll be adding is this lot in the center, or this line in the center here to create two individual lots, one R and two R. This is the plat without contours. And their variance requests include half-street improvements, sidewalks, and lot configuration.
Engineering?
Engineering is okay with those requests?
Thank you, sir. Petitioner?
Mission, my name's Chris Centel, Centel Engineering, six three nine Black Bears Way. The current owner is wanting to, I guess, sell the warehouse that's behind him and the cell towers located on. So, and separate the hotel from those two. It probably should've been done like that, I guess, to start with, instead of having two businesses on one lot.
Go back up to the drawings there. One thing that came up in chair and vice chair and, uh, just mentioned about the, uh, ingress and egress to the hotel on the southern going on a lot two R.
It was, is that, would you request that? I, I'll be glad to, we'd be glad to do that.
Well, it, it, it just looks obvious that, uh, the people leaving the hotel site after it's subdivided are gonna use the road that takes you to the warehouse. I think it would be wise to.
It, a joint access agreement where they do share maintenance, yes, absolutely.
Any other questions or concerns for this petitioner? Thank you, sir. Okay, well, I think we have a few folks signed up for, oh, next one, sorry. Is anyone in the audience care to speak for or against this petition request? Okay, having heard none, bring back up the variance request, please. We have a forest commission, S seventy-six twenty-two, resurvey of lot two, Woodruff Industrial Park Three, variance request, half-street improvement, sidewalk, slot configuration, engineering has no issues with. Motion in a second.
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Hornsby?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes, motion approved.
Next up is S seventy-seven twenty-two, Thomas McKay subdivision. This is consisting of two residential lots on approximately three point two five acres, located at five nine one eight and five nine two two thirty-first street. This is not in city limits. Here you can see the vicinity map and the zoning. This is just outside of city limits, near Culver Road. Here's an aerial image of the property. And here's our plat with contours. So currently, there is one lot line here that splits this property on either side. They're proposing to jog that line over just slightly. You can see it on the plat without contours as well, so that this lot now obtains this portion back here. So going from two lots, remaining two lots, just obtaining some of that land in the back. Their variance requests include lot width, cap sewer, and half-street improvements.
Engineering?
We're okay with those requests. I'd like to go on record as saying that the proposed lot currently today does not connect to the city sewer system. And they, you're not allowed to connect to the sewer unless you annex into the city. I just want that on record.
That would be lot one, or lot two?
So lot two has existing sewer. You can see it there in front of the house.
I'm sorry, lot one.
Yeah.
Uh, lot one would have to annex to connect to the sewer.
Okay. Thank you. Petitioner?
Chris Centel, Centel Engineering, six three nine Black Bears Way. Uh, Mr. McKay is the owner of lot one. He's, he's purchased one acre uh, at the rear of Ms. Thomas's lot two. As far as the sewer goes, I mean, there is proposed sewer coming, and I show it's one and a half force, one and a half inch PVC force main that's coming on the front of the lot. But I guess if he has to tie on, he'll have to.
Is this existing sewer?
No, it's proposed. It's, it's been approved and, and it's, it's, it's gonna be constructed.
Okay, if this is some type of grant sewer, that, then, then maybe there's a, there's, I, I was assuming that the, the drawing wasn't too detailed on whether it was existing or proposed, and I apologize, but if it's existing sewer, the city's policy is you have to annex. If it's part of a proposed system, I guess it's working in conjunction with the county?
It, it is.
Okay.
It's working in conjunction with the county sewer system, or sewer project.
So it'll be a county sewer system? Am I hearing that correctly?
Well, it's a city sewer system, but the county's funding it.
How, in that scenario, still got to annex?
I don't know enough detail on that to answer that question.
I'm, I'm not as familiar, I'm not involved, I mean, that's my company, but I'm not involved in the project, but.
There are some, some older grant sewers.
Yes.
That were done that we have to allow people to connect to without annexation. There's some around Holt. Uh, other than that, they're gonna have to annex, but we don't know what the circumstances of this are.
It's gonna be available, and if they wanna connect, connect to the sewer, then.
Sounds like, okay, at least now the owner's got options.
He's got an option, that's correct.
Any other questions for the petitioner?
When did the county get the sewer to this? That's a question for another day.
That's a, that's a.
Yeah, that's a question for another day.
Alright, fair enough. Thank you. Uh, anyone, time for this one?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we had two people signed up, a Willie J. Barnes.
Any, Mr. Barnes, care to make comments? Okay.
And a, is it Lauren M. Barnes?
You're good, Ms. Barnes? Okay. Alright, anyone else care to speak for or against this petition? Come, come a little closer into the microphone.
Hello, my name is David Brown. I believe I'm the owner of lot two. And, and I'm not willing to sell for him to be able to build on that, that property.
Wait a minute, you own lot two?
Yeah.
And you're gonna sell him part of the property?
I was.
You're gonna sell him the back?
No, I wasn't planning on selling it to him. I didn't talk with him several times, Mr. McKay, and I wasn't planning on selling it.
We need to talk to our engineer now.
Oh, now, yeah.
He wrote us an email, didn't he? Didn't this, isn't, this is the man who wrote us an email.
I, I believe there might be some confusion. It looks like Mr. Barnes owns the lot on the other side, not lot two.
This house belongs to Ms. Tom, Ms. Thomas. Yeah, this, this is Mrs. Thomas's house. You, you, you're to the east of the property.
Okay, so I just got this letter.
Okay, we got, you threw us for a curveball there.
Public, public notice.
I was, we were thinking. I was, we were thinking you were Lot Two, and you were selling and not selling.
I hadn't had dinner, man.
You still, you're gonna keep your property, no problem, Ms. Barnes.
That would have been a first.
That would have been a first. All right. Anyone else have any questions or comments? All right, having heard none, uh, bring back up the variance request, please. All right, commission before us, we have S seventy-seven twenty-two Thomas McKay Subdivision. Since they've only two lots, uh, variance request of lot width, cap sewer, half street improvements, engineering has no issues with, they have a motion and a second.
Second.
Ms. Prince.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion approved.
All right, so next up is S seventy-eight twenty-two, this is a re-survey of lots ten through twelve Regional Forest. Consisting of two residential lots on approximately two acres. Located at one three five two zero and one three five two four Regional Forest Road. This is not in city limits. You can see this is adjacent to the lake, not in city limits. This is the aerial image of the property. Uh, this does a better job, however, of showing that the existing residence to the north is actually over that property line.
So we're just putting the property line down.
So removing this line and removing that line. Giving a little more land to Lot Twelve R so that they can achieve the one acre minimum. And both lots have existing sewer systems. Variants requests include cap sewer.
And, engineering?
We're okay with that request.
Thank you, petitioner.
Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, I'm Gary Cobb with Black Warrior Survey, and here tonight representing Dr. Ashley Evans, and, like I said, we're going from three existing lots to two lots to correct the encroaching house on the north, so I'll answer any questions there.
Seems pretty clear, but any questions from the commission? Thank you, anyone in the audience care to speak for or against this petition request? Having heard none, commission before us, S seventy-eight twenty-two, re-surveys of Lot Ten through Twelve, uh, Rayhanal Forest. One variance request, cap sewer, engineering has no issues with, they have a motion and a second.
Motion.
Ms. Hornsby.
Yes.
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 Yes, motion approved.
Last case of the evening is S seventy-nine twenty-two, re-survey of Lot Two Elliott Estates. This is consisting of two lots on approximately six point nine two acres located at one eighty Patriot Parkway, not in city limits. You can see where we are here, uh, south of town again. Corner of Patriot Parkway and Old Marion Road. Creating Lot Two B and Lot Two A. Their plat without contours, their variance request is cap sewer.
Engineering.
We're okay with the variance request for cap sewer.
Uh, petitioner. Petitioner.
Yes, it's Mike Hicks of Vernon Hicks Associates.
You've got Mike Hicks up here, is this the real Mike Hicks?
This is he.
All right, go ahead, Mike.
Can y'all hear me okay?
Wait, yeah.
I'm wanting to sell the two acres, you know.
Hold on one second.
Okay.
The engineer, we're talking to the engineer on the...
Yeah, this is the petitioner.
The petitioner is, is on the computer with us. We, we, I'm, we'll call you back up in just a minute.
All right, Mr. Hicks, continue.
Yes, Mr. Elliott owns a seven acre parcel, he's wanting to sell about four and a half acres off of it. The, uh, of course, the road frontage is all in, we're asking for variance from sidewalks.
Waiting for... Hang on one second, Mike, okay. Can we move mics? Box?
Did, did you say waiver of sidewalk construction?
Yes. You're looking at, you're looking at around eleven thousand dollars to build a sidewalk along the road frontage here.
It, it was not a noted variance request that was put up on the screen, the, the, the plat, the plat prior to this, has a note on the recorded plat. It says, prior to this lot being subdivided again, sidewalk has to be installed.
Which is why we didn't include a sidewalk variance, 'cause the previous plat said that it's required, so they're not eligible to ask for that variance.
Okay.
So there's not a choice for them?
Say that again?
There's not, there's not an option for them to develop it.
There's not an option.
They, they must put the sidewalk in.
That's on the Patriot Parkway side or all around both lots?
It's on, I think it stipulates Patriot Parkway.
Sorry?
It stipulates to be on Patriot Parkway. And it's the, uh, supposed to be for both lots, the lot that's subdivided and the, uh, lot to the west.
So, Mr. Hicks, you, you're muted.
Oh, well now, we don't, you, you're saying that the owner of this, uh, Lot Two would have to construct sidewalks over on Lot One?
When you say Lot One, you talking about Lot Two B or Two A?
I think, uh, Mr. Garner referred to the lot to the west, which was Lot One of Elliott Estates, is that correct, Michael?
That's correct.
So this owner of Lot Two, who's wanting to subdivide his, his lot, you're saying that he would have to construct sidewalks across both Lot Two and One?
Mike, if I'm not mistaken, y'all did that plat in the note.
We did.
Okay, so, you need to read the plat that you got recorded, and, and maybe I'm mistaken, but I believe that's what it says.
I, I think, I was on commission when that happened. And they did it originally a while back, and reason for that was access to the school. Because it is, it's, it's attributed to the school.
Yeah, we were there, yeah, we've seen this, that's... And, and we did what, approve it with that contingency.
Right.
Because the, the folks in Elliott Estates
Right.
Yeah, don't need it, but the, if this property's developed, then it does, so...
But just on Patriot Parkway, not on Old Marion Road?
I believe that's correct, but whatever the, whatever the recorded plat states is what you'll have to conform to.
Okay. Okay, that's, that's, yeah, I wasn't involved in that previous plat, but I understand.
It, it wouldn't, would he be, I guess what I'm asking, he would be required to do it across Lot Two B but not Lot One, is that correct?
Tim, I think it covers the entire link of Patriot Parkway.
So Mike, are you aware, I mean, we're learning this now, what is your, what are your...
I knew that that stipulation had been made, I did not realize it was on the plat, uh, I thought it was just a, a stipulation in approval of the previous plat.
You wanna ask for a continuance and get with your property owner?
I believe the, one of the developers there in the, uh, council chamber.
Okay, well, I didn't, I, we're, we're not sure who's, we're letting you go first, so, if it's done, we'll call up who's signed up. Are you done for the moment?
Yes.
Okay, uh, all right.
Mr. Chairman, are you, I assume you're Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Okay.
Name and address for the record, please. Your name and address for the record.
Uh, one eight oh Patriot Parkway.
Name being?
Charles Elliott.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Elliott.
Well, I'm kinda lost, 'cause I, you know. When, when I got to the divorce and we split the property up, they started saying something about a sidewalk. I, you know, I, I, I build a sidewalk if I want to, I, you know, I'm not, I'm not gonna build one, you know. But I'm gonna, my daddy was born right there where I'm fixing to put a trailer, and I'm gonna live right there.
You're gonna be on Two A or Two B? Are you on Two A or Two B?
I'm gonna be on Two B.
Two B, the one right there on Patriot Parkway.
Yeah.
Is, is this in the county?
Yeah.
Yes. And Patriot Parkway used to be mine, and the county bought it. When Bobby Miller was county commissioner.
They should have put you a sidewalk in, and they sold it. You understand what the situation is, we, it's redevelopment based on the previous...
Yeah, I, I, I'm... I've been knowing Mr. Banks for all my life, just about, but, uh, he come to me and wanted to build a house back there, and I want him as a neighbor. And if it wasn't for that, I ain't got nothing for sale.
Might wanna see if he wants to build a, build a sidewalk. Might need to have him build the sidewalk then, that's what it's gonna require, if he does it, you got...
I don't understand what that part has got to do with the sidewalk, because that's on Old Marion Road.
Well, the sidewalk's gonna...
That's gonna be a hundred yards past Patriot Parkway for him to have a driveway going into his place.
But the sidewalk's gonna be on your property.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's all about the sidewalk that was committed to previously on Patriot Parkway, so all your, your six hundred and ten on Patriot...
Yeah, it's on Patriot Parkway. I ain't doing nothing, I ain't doing nothing here but cutting grass.
Well, they're gonna be, if you do this, you're gonna build a sidewalk.
Huh?
If you do this, you're gonna be building a sidewalk.
If I do this, I'm gonna build a sidewalk.
Somebody, somebody's gonna build one.
I'm not building one.
I, I think, I think we need to, I, I, I would recommend you ask for a continuance, get with Mr. Hicks, and y'all figure it out, 'cause basically, if you do this, you're gonna be building, somebody's gonna build a sidewalk. That was, that was committed to previously.
Well, what about the people that own the property next to me? Will they have to build a sidewalk too?
If they were to subdivide their land, they would need to.
Yeah, if they came and did what you're doing right now, that's when they'd have to do theirs. Not what you wanted to hear.
Well, let me ask you this, then, what if I just give him two acres?
Give who two acres?
Mr. Banks.
Still gotta subdivide, though.
Huh?
Still gotta subdivide it legally.
Okay, if I lease it to him, I could do that, couldn't I? Stick it in a name and just lease it to him.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna defer to one of the attorneys around here and on, and our staff attorney.
You'd have to do it without changing the lot lines. If the county lets him live back there...
Without having to change the what?
You can't, you can't change a lot line, that's your problem.
Okay, I'll be good.
If the county lets him live there, with, with two residential structures on one lot, if that doesn't violate any county rules, you could do that, just as it is.
So...
But you'd own the land his house was on.
Name and address for the record.
How are y'all? Max Snyder, one two one seven seven Shoal Ridge, Northport, Alabama. I'm here actually helping my father-in-law and his family, who want to purchase Lot Two A. So, helping them through the process, and I know Bobby wouldn't be able to be here tonight, so just trying to figure things out. Did not know that that note's on the plat, uh, so that, that does, you know, change things a little bit. My question is, though, has, has the county been, uh, brought into this discussion about the sidewalks? 'Cause I know from previous conversations that the county will not accept the sidewalks and maintain them, so you're pretty much... You're, you're...
I'm, I'm gonna read the note verbatim on the recorded plat that we just pulled up. It's note number four on the plat of Elliott Estates. If either lot subdivides, they are responsible for the development of sidewalks on their property. If Lot Two subdivides before Lot One, Lot Two is required to develop sidewalks along Lot One as well. So, before this lot property can be subdivided, uh, we need a sidewalk entirely in front of Lot One and Lot Two on Patriot Parkway.
So, Max, I, I think I remember, I think I remember this right, when we did that, there's, there's, there are a lot, there have been a lot of developments in that area. And residential without sidewalks, and there's a lot of kids, we were concerned with walking down the street. Somebody's divided up in, uh, garden homes or something, which was, that, that, that community was ripe for that. I think if you note in the previous, all the previous ones we've developed around there here recently, they do, they do include sidewalks. So our, our, our issue was not, we're not, we never envisioned it being private ownership subdividing a lot between two individuals. But, it's written on the plat that way, and we can't do anything about it until that's changed, so...
Okay, so even they... Okay, okay. I, I do want to, and I, I can submit this to the staff, to mention that the MPO's pedestrian plan that's adopted does not show planned sidewalks for this portion of Patriot Parkway. It actually stops to the, uh, west of this.
It is recorded on that plat, and your engineer record recorded it on that plat.
And I guess that was a requirement of the commission, correct?
That was, that was a requirement of the commission, that's correct.
I just didn't wanna throw your engineer under the bus, because we required him to do that.
I mean, that all, that, that being said, you've got a couple of options, we can, we can vote it, and then you, or you can ask for a continuance to try to figure this thing out, which...
If, if this is, here, here's my suggestion to you, if this is, if, if you still wanna try to work this out, you need to continue and get, your engineer, come get with the staff, and see what mechanism by which we can, if there's a, if there's a mechanism by which we can resolve this.
It's better to continue this.
Okay.
I think we need to a, ask for a continuance. If they build a sidewalk, I furnish the lane?
And you furnish the sidewalk.
Yeah, yeah.
The sidewalk will be constructed in the present right of way of Patriot Parkway, it will not take up any land.
Okay. Does that make, make sense? So Mike, you're on, you're on line and, and owners are here, are you formally asking for...
That would be my, that would be my recommendation, but I'm gonna leave it up to Mr. Elliott, since he's the owner of the property.
You're, you're, come on back up, Mr. Elliott, Mr. Elliott, your engineer is, he's recommending you ask for a continuance, but it's ultimately your call to ask for that.
Ask for what now?
For a continuance to, to, we would, no vote tonight, you'll go back here with engineer, and y'all will try to figure it out, work with staff to see what
All right, I'll do that.
could, could not be done.
I'll do that.
Okay. All right, Mr. Elliott has asked for a continuance, Mike, so...
Okay.
Commission, we have a potential request for S seventy-nine twenty-two, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Meeting is adjourned.
We had a couple interesting ones there towards the end today, didn't we?